Well, I'd start with the meeting. I was going to, I think I still will if Mr. Keys is ready, I'd like to move you up on your agenda so you don't have to wait through the entire, because they had you at the end of the agenda.
So, I'm very interested.
This one hasn't happened in a while since I've, are you, would you, are you okay now? This is Charles Keys from Keys Architect with our proposal on the fire department. As you remember, we had four bids and we accepted, accepted three of them as far as we considered, and one was Acre Plate, so we couldn't consider that one, so now we're down considering the three that we did allow to be submitted, and we've asked for some value engineering and some other things, so Mr. Keys is going to make a recommendation to us based on that, and so I'll turn it over to Charles Keys.
So, what we did was took along the process, and I'm sorry, part of it was our fault, part of our engineers' fault, and we did things along the way, so it's taken a while, and I apologize for that, but we took the bids in, they were over what we wanted, so we had this big, we sent a letter out, a big list of what we could change and still get a viable building for the city. We were able to save, with the lowest bidder, we were able to save $96,000, but they also suggested several things that we can't save, you know, well, take out sprinklers, you save $93,000, well, you can't do that, and you wouldn't want to anyway. So, this is the best we could come up with, with the value engineering items, we've saved, I think it's 10 or 12 different items where we were able to make savings, but we think it's still going to be a very good building, we didn't give up anything important, still going to have a storm room in it, like the new code requires, but it's going to be a little smaller, it's things that we were modifying. Yes, sir.
Excuse me for interrupting you, but I'm a little slow with this engineering stuff. So, when you say this value engineering, where this one is being said $81,000, one of them at $96,000, is that where, is that what you're talking about, you cut out some stuff?
Right, and we gave them a list, right here's a list of what we said, here's some things we think you could, should consider saving money on, and then we said, anything else you can think of, just because they might know something we don't know, what if they changed a different brand for lights, or whatever, and so they came back and like to say, some of the things, the, delete the epoxy flooring, you know, or, or delete the sprinkler system, or change, you know, delete the equipment lockers and benches, well, somebody's got to put it in, so we take, if we took that one out, then we'd be standing in front of you guys saying, now we need money for that. So, value engineering is, is taking the bones of the building and saying, if you had to change your bid, what can we save on?
And still be an effective.
And still be effective building, and so we gave them a list of about 20 things, and some of them, they didn't save enough, the city said, I mean, the fire department and Greg said, well, we have to have that, it didn't save enough to make any sense.
Okay.
And I have that list if anybody wants to see it.
No, I just, that's what I understand by, since Councilman Shekels interrupted you, I'll go ahead and make a comment. I don't think it's a good idea not to have sprinklers, because that would be good if the fire department burned down.
Right. That's kind of embarrassing. When we were building Zoneton, the sprinkling actually caught the building on fire, and Oklahoma had to come before they ever finished their fire station. But, so, yeah, some things, and code wise, we went, I actually went back with Logan Spalding and made sure that what's on this list still passes the building code, too, so we're very careful about that. So, we were able to save $96,000, when we add, I can give the alternate for the generator, which we really need, 1,354, and that is through Marksberry Cornet, out of, they're out of Louisville, they have a few subcontractors and suppliers in Barstown, not a whole lot, but because we couldn't force them, our deal there is to make sure we get the best numbers and the best combination of bidders, some, sometimes if you say, you will use this electrician, it might not be the best for the city, so we tried to get, again, on the value engineering side, let them supply, tell us who their suppliers are and their bidders are, and so we think we have a good list, we've worked with Marksberry Cornet on a couple of jobs this size, they did a church for us a couple of years ago, and they did along the way, and when you're doing a renovation project, sometimes you find things, you know, well, we didn't know about this, we didn't know about that, and they were, along the way, they actually, some things they charged us extras because they were, and some things they saved us and said, how about if I switch this for that, and so they're not all about the extras, and that's, that's good to know when you're, when you're good, and especially in a renovation project like this. So, that's our recommendation.
I was just curious, it's more construction days for this particular company, is there some reason for that, it's saying 180 construction days?
No, they, we let them pick that also, because some of them, if the number's real close, sometimes it is important to say, we have a deadline of, in Louisville it's always dirty day, we got to get this open, you know, same thing here, bourbon festival, whatever, but we have, we let them pick those days, and I don't think that's unrealistic at all, we don't gain anything by making it a little shorter, we actually are going to pay more to another contractor, so we think it's best to leave that, the 180 is not bad, and it's very compatible for building the size and complexity of this building.
So, your recommendation is for Marksberry Cornet, and they're still the low bidder, they were the low bidder to start, they're still a little bit, even with the generator and the value of about $78,000.
Yeah, even with the value engineering, they got a little bit lower.
Right. And the generator price was a little higher, but overall, they're still $78,400, so.
Yeah, so that's our recommendation, as always, we will be involved throughout the process, making sure the draws are in place, making sure that things are proceeding as they're supposed to, so we'll be working with Greg and Chief here, make sure that goes as smooth as we can.
I have a question, which local subcontractors will they be using, do you know?
He just said, we asked him that, and he just sent a list of saying concrete, installed material, and he's got, I think he's already set an account with a local hardware store, is all he told us, his superintendent lives in Barstown, so the guy that's running the job lives in Barstown.
Is there any other questions, Mr. Keys, on this proposal for the renovation of Firehouse Station 1?
What does the labor bond, what does that mean?
The what?
Labor bonds?
Okay, normally what we ask them, there's, there's a couple of different types of bonds, one's called bid bond, and that is when they turn a bid in, guarantees no matter what happens, they'll do it for that number, we don't like those, because if he forgot $70,000, he's going to fight like crazy to keep, to get that back, so we, I don't like, that's called a bid bond, but we do have, a normal is called a performance bond, it's a labor's and materials bond, so if something happened, he's guaranteed with that bond, he has a bonding company, that this project will be completed, the only reason it doesn't say materials in there is because you guys are repaying most of the materials, he has a set price, he turns that in and he can't go over that number, but, you know, his overall price won't go up because he misjudged materials, that's not the point, the point is, he gives you the bills and you pay them and save the taxes as a nonprofit, I mean, as a city entity, so that's why, when you do materials payment bond, it makes no sense, you're making the payments on materials, and the companies won't pick that up, so we have one on his labor portion, if he doesn't pay a subcontractor, that's covered by insurance, if he doesn't, if he goes bankrupt, for whatever reason, that, there's an insurance policy that says, we will pay whatever it takes, the next bidder or whoever to finish the job, so the job will be.
So, the discrepancy in the cost of that is because whoever they wrote their bond with.
And sometimes it's, sometimes it's one of those, in our list there, we have a lot of different indicators, and one of them's indicator, if, if the bonds are costing somebody $10,000, and this guy's $50,000, well, the insurance companies don't like him, and we use that sometimes as an indicator, go, well, wait a minute, what's, what's wrong with that, we do the same with how many days it takes, and, and some of these other things that aren't low dollars, but they're more about important things to you guys. So, I think, like I say, it's been around a long time, I think it'd be a company, you can look them up online if you want to.
Any other questions, or Mr. Keys? Okay, if not, I would entertain a motion then to approve the recommendation by Architect Keys Architect to award the renovation project to Marksberry Cornet for the Station 1, the Barstown Fire Department, for a sum of 1,354,000 dollars.
Some move.
Excuse me, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman Hems, any other discussion?
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Chief Mattingly, are you comfortable with what was cut?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It's been 100% law, and maybe one was a little bigger.
He wants it bigger.
Thank you, Betty, for making the question. Any other discussion? All in favor, just seeing if I was saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you, Mr. Keys, for your help, we look forward to working with you as we go forward on this project, so.
And let's start by working with contractors ready and all that stuff, make sure the insurance is in place and all that before you do a meeting, okay?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks for hitting me out early.
Okay, the next item is our minutes from our June 26th, that was the second reading of the budget, pretty well, if there's no additions or corrections, we can prove them unanimous, contemporary management, the minutes from the 25th will be in the next meeting, Gary's presided over the 26th, we didn't preside over the 25th, so you've got to listen to those and write them up and so forth, so we'll have those at the next meeting. I think, Councilman Shekels, are you the sponsor of the donation request for Buttermilk Festival 25th anniversary?
Greg.
Are you both, yeah, sorry?
I'll make a motion to introduce the 25th anniversary Buttermilk Festival donation request in the amount of $2,500. Hope I did that right.
We don't have the application, but there's an application, it goes, we can get them to fill that out, but we do have the letter that spells out the reason behind the request.
If you scroll down, Mayor.
No, I'm sorry, it's missing.
Just keep it there.
Okay, I got it, sorry about that, but we do have that, so I take that. So, it's been introduced, do we want a motion for approval, and then we can have some discussion?
Make a motion to approve the request.
Everybody have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Is that it? Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mary, like this money, does this come like out of our, where does, where's?
Community grant fund, and then, I think last year we donated $2,000, I think I was correct, and I think the request last year was for 2,500, but we did $2,000 last year, so I'll leave that up to you all to decide.
Didn't it come out of our contingent last year, because we had?
It came out of the.
Came out of community development.
Came out of community development.
We just, now we've increased that by $10,000 this year. We do have a motion, and a second, is there any other discussion?
Mayor, I didn't know, he does mention in his letter about closing the streets, I don't know if that's something we need to take up, that's certainly closer to that date, or, I guess we're.
I want to make sure.
Did we get that on the next agenda?
Yeah, Frank, it says South Third at the, south of the entrance of St. Monica's, it's closed further on, up on South Third.
Close to Robin Street.
Paint, paint.
So, is that somewhat incorrect?
Yeah, well, actually, on the, on Thursday night, I think we closed right there at St. Monica's, a lot of that, soccer game, or softball game, or something.
That might be an issue, that should.
Yeah, no, it's wrong. So, technically, I guess, technically, it should be on, it should be on the paint right there.
The paint, yeah.
I guess Wayne was thinking the same things. That's the same request we have every year.
Any other discussion or questions? We have a motion and a second.
Can we, can we say something?
Sure.
Well, thank you for addressing this, my name is Keisha Popey, and I'm a member of the committee, and we'd just like to thank you guys for bringing it up and acknowledging this festival every year that we've had it, this is the 25th year, and each year, the cost goes up, whether it is parking, or, or security, or what have you, but it has been a very successful festival, and one that has no incidents, and so, you know, we asked community partners to help us, I believe the amount that we asked for was 2,500, I know previous years we've asked for 2,000, but we would greatly appreciate it if you would think about the 2,500 donation this year, it is our 25th anniversary, and many community partners as well have stepped up to the plate, and so, in the end of this, we once again thank you so very much for your participation, and we hope to see you at the Buttermilk Festival, thank you.
Audrey, so did we clarify whether we need to?
I think we should.
I think we have to have a separate motion for the street closure, separate than the donation request.
Right, yes, I just wanted to clear we were going to address that tonight, also those stuff.
Okay.
Well, we've got time.
Yeah, we've got plenty of time, we've got a short agenda.
They can give that to us.
I could, I could wait to redo that.
Okay, so this motion is for the donation, anyway, that's what this is all about, the letter included the street mentioned the closure, so, thank you, Keisha, we have a motion and a second, any more discussion to approve the request for the $2,500 donation to the Buttermilk Day's Foundation. All in favor, just seeing if I was saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's carried.
Oh, stay.
Okay, one extension, Councilman Shekels. All right, I think, probably a couple of months ago, I brought up the question of whether we felt like we still needed to have this working, it's still called the working session, but it's actually an ordained naming of the city council, which anytime you have a quorum, you have, it's, it really has to be considered a full meeting of the council, because when you have a quorum, you can take up issues and they can be voted on, so in order for us to adjust that schedule, if we decide we do not want to have this meeting the first Tuesday of the month, we would have to have a motion to change that, and then have the city attorney draft a amendment to that ordinance that ordains this meeting as a regular meeting, the fact that you have different times doesn't become into play, they're all considered a regular meeting in the presence of a quorum, so, I put it out to you, you ought to be thinking about it, but also in the meantime, in our staff meetings, I asked the department heads to consider that I also was in contact with some of our other legislative bodies, like planning and zoning, and short review board, and board of adjustments, just to make sure that if we lose this one meeting, this particular first Tuesday of the month, if there was any issues that might present a problem, and I spoke with each of them, and none of the planning's on, the board of adjustments, the short review board, none of them had issues, because all those meetings are held, I think typically like the second to, or third Tuesdays of the month, so the stuff that they process gets to us usually towards the end of our, our second meeting or our fourth Tuesday of the month, so no conflicts there, and I think the staff wanted to vote the day I met, I actually did it the last staff meeting, and they said, we really have any more discussion, we can answer that, I said, no, you go back and talk to your department people, too, because you all process a lot of, you know, there's things such as, you know, water sewer, you know, that comes to us streets and stuff like that, and anyway, I didn't get any, nothing so far unless you all as a council see any issue with it, and as you all know, since we've been together here, our meetings aren't going that long anyway, even our second Tuesday and our fourth Tuesday meetings, so.
So, basically, this working session stuff that we normally would add in the working session, we could basically take those up if you need.
That, it appears that there's plenty of time in the other two meetings, and look, they're kind of starting easing up and now vote for the council.
And I guess if there was something pressing, we could always have a special call meeting.
Sure, we used to do that sometimes when we were in the budget process, and we'd have to call the finance committee meeting, or, or the full council work session to go over, but.
Is there any way that we can, and I haven't really thought this through, so I'm just going to say it, is there any way that we can work out to where that date doesn't coincide, or our council meetings don't coincide a lot of times with the planning and zoning committee meetings, a lot of those meetings, I know I would like to attend, and I think other members of the council sometimes would like to attend, is there any way we can take advantage of us dropping this one meeting and aligning that with planning and zoning, so we don't have a meeting that corresponds to that?
That seems a second Tuesday of the month?
Who's this?
The French?
No. But they'd be at 5:00 o'clock, or 6:30?
They'd be at 6:30.
Well, I mean, you know, we're just having a discussion, if, I mean, if you decide you want to drop that meeting, you know, we're going to ask for a motion later, and the city attorney will draft the change in the ordinance that calls for the three meetings, so I mean, if you all want some discussion, this is the time to do it, whether you'd prefer to have, change it to the first and third Tuesdays of the month, if you want to do that, or the first.
Well, just, just a thought.
First and fourth Tuesday of the month.
The only concern I would have, and I would want to talk to Rochelle, because I think that would probably, I think she would, I don't think she could have, I'm trying to think, wouldn't this short review board meet, they meet on the third week?
They'd meet on the third.
So, that would just move, I mean, I don't think it would be an issue, just probably move all the COAs to our first meeting, does that make sense, it'd be from the previous month, because I don't think she would have had the meeting before our third Tuesday meeting.
You know, we just changed a lot of the things for, or they changed their things to accommodate that fourth meeting, and that gives them that whole period of time to process their COAs before.
Well, Rochelle always has the hard time getting the minutes turned back on, so that would give her an extra weekend theory, I guess.
So, what would be the, what would be the rotation, or be the first and fourth meetings in the fourth Tuesday of the month?
Yeah, that'd be wild, yeah, just, it was just a thought, I mean, I know that's, that's always something that.
You know, historically, we always had the second and fourth, and we added the third meeting several years ago, I think during Mayor Hibson's term, so prior to that, it had always been the second and fourth, I think, I don't remember. So, I'm just throwing that out, if you don't want to change it, maybe we can keep coming three times a month, but it's just like a meeting like tonight, you know, without this discussion, it'd be done in 15 minutes, and most of our other meetings are lasting maybe just an hour, or sometimes less than that, so I think the two meetings are adequate to cover up the business.
Well, what if you, what if, what if you didn't change anything, and then for us to do that, if there wasn't really enough to have on the agenda, can you not just cancel the council meeting?
Or the public?
I'm just asking.
You have to give, I guess.
You have to give notice.
You have to give notice every time you can, actually give a 24-hour notice, I think.
Same way we do, when we had work, we used to have working sessions, if there wasn't anything really to discuss in working sessions.
We had done that on occasion, we have canceled, so.
Yes, if, you know, just not, just have a meeting, have a meeting, I don't know, several times we kept a working session meeting when there wasn't a whole lot to discuss, but.
That really wouldn't require a change to anything.
Anything, just send a 24-hour notice out, that we weren't going to have a meeting that day.
You're not saying cancel until further notice, you're the same.
Well, he is saying cancel until further notice.
Cancel it.
He didn't say that.
We'll just give notice, we'll give notice 24 hours, I mean, that works, I mean.
I mean, then you don't want to change anything, I mean, if you, if you set your agenda, if you look at it like, like tonight, like you said, had we not been discussing this, what we're discussing now, you know, this other stuff, could basically wait until.
We wanted to get, we did want to get the decision on the fire department soon as possible, we wanted that left, I guess.
I'll translate what Councilman Shekels is saying. He's like, we want to meet, we want to meet unless you tell us we need to meet.
The split yells.
Well, yes, well, we will have to notify, we will have to notify media and public ahead of time, I don't know if that requires a publication in Kentucky State, I think we do all that, I think the law's changed, we do that by email.
Yeah, we can do, we can do that by those.
We don't have to do a fax or a letter, we can do that, so if you're all comfortable with that, then we won't have to do any kind of formal vote and change any ordinance, we just notify them forward, if we have something that's worth bringing up on the first meeting, we'll call it, if not, we'll be sending a notice of nothing, we won't be having.
So, we would get noticed, like, on that Monday, the day before?
I'd say you probably get a variety of addresses, you know, if there's nothing on the agenda, we try to get people to submit to the agenda by Thursday, Friday at the latest, or if there's nothing, we'll send that out, media will have plenty of time not to, to accept their plans as well, so.
Is fire department being rough already, I saw it swaying today.
Now that you mention that, I know it's always been a discussion, some people, 7:00 versus 6:30, I would be a big advocate of moving it up a little bit, but I don't know how that works.
It's worth a discussion, too.
When I was on planning and zoning, we did compromise, and that's how they came up with that 6:30 time, because it was 7:00, I believe, so are you saying that maybe move it to like 6:30?
Well, I think it would be nice if we did have those long meetings, you know, if we're going to go back to two meetings, and if you did, plus, you know, I don't know how Rochelle feel, but at the time, an early meeting would be a lot for me, because I just, sometimes I'm just hanging around home, waiting to come, you know, so.
It's more work, man.
Well, you know, we have changed that over the last several years, we were, it used to be seven thirty, and we moved it to seven, so I, I mean, this is good discussion, it might be, this is worse than what we're having.
You know, they, they hold a lot of their meetings, P and Z, and those guys are five, 6:30, and it didn't, it didn't do a problem.
I know a lot of times.
Board of adjustments, board of adjustments, and they might get it at six, but I think they do, I think they do six.
Six, six thirty.
I'd be okay with six or six thirty, too.
The staff, you know, they leave typically around 4:30, some that stick a problem, then they have to come back, you know, for meetings, so.
Six sounds good to me.
Six o'clock work, better?
We will have to revise the ordinance for that.
I mean, this was a discussion about, I'd be all right with six.
A lot easier on our staffers, too.
Short wags.
Don't forget wags in there.
Okay, so, it sounds like there's support to change the starting times of the ordained meetings to 6:00 PM, do you still want to keep the one at 5:00 for the work session, or you just want to let them all 6:00?
I'd make them all 6:00, if you, if you said you want, you said first.
And we can let the media and the public know that we're, whether we are or not going to have the first meeting of the month, or you can, or as planned, we will be having two for sure, but we may not have three.
If we're going to change the ordinance anyway, to change the time, should we just not go on and take the planning session out?
I think we should keep it there, personally, in case we need it, I mean, it'd be a much simpler thing, and we'd have to call a special session if we need it, if there was enough on the agenda that we, that we weren't us having it, I think we should keep it there and just.
But we're going to look at it as more of a special, I mean, have us only, look at it as the only needed, maybe.
There might, there might be something that's time sensitive that needs to come before, so, okay, so.
How do you feel about 6:00?
I'm fine with it, I worked with six most of it every night, anyway, I just go straight from work to going home and coming back.
And if I'm not, but I'm correct, if we have a special meeting, we only can talk about what that meeting is specifically called for, if we have a regular meeting, it gives us more flexibility.
We'll fill the agenda on Thursday or Friday like we normally do, it's called...
Well, that's what I'm saying, if you just kept everything the same, we just changed the time, and then, then you don't have to change, you don't have to call any special meetings, or you can talk about whatever you want to talk about.
So it sounds like then, from this discussion, that there is support among the council to change the starting times of all the ordained meetings, currently the first, second, and fourth Tuesdays of the month to six P.M. That's what we, I think that's what we come to from this discussion. So do I have a motion to change the ordained times of the meetings, first, second, and fourth Tuesdays of the month to six P.M.?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Williams, is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Buckland, is there any more discussion? And then we would instruct the city attorney to make some appropriate amendments and bring that back.
How do you say that?
All in favor, just seeing if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Is there any... Any member of the council have any comments or anything else to bring forward this evening? If there's nothing else to be brought to force, then I'd ask for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Hens, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Buckland, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Do we adjourn? Thank you.